Okay, we're gonna get started. All right. So let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education from Monday, September 28th. To order, if I could ask everyone, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
................................................
All right, good evening, everybody. Could I ask for a roll call, please?
Steven Arthur. Karen Batson.
Here.
Alex Delly-Cully.
Here.
Pat Marie.
Here.
Scott Luce.
Here.
Karen Munstead.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Okay, so we note Steven Arthur and Ellen Mauer are both absent for the record. Can I ask, Karen, you be secretary for ten, please? Okay. Our agenda today, we do have an education presentation which will have some student achievement recognition, and we'll also talk about the District 128 Growth and Measurement Plan. Nothing really specific on the president's report. We will have updates from some student, school board reps, the superintendent's report. We'll then open it up for public comment. I would ask that anybody from the public that is speaking tonight to please limit their comments to three minutes, please. And we won't be responding to any comments this evening. That's our regular practice. We will approve the consent vote agenda, which was reviewed earlier this month in committee. We'll have updates from program and personnel and facilities and finance. I don't believe there's anything from property, because Steven is not here. CEDOL, Karen, anything? Nothing from CEDOL. II, SP, nothing from the Illinois Associated School Boards. And then we will convene for a brief executive session, but there's no action planned after that.
That's correct.
Okay. All right? Any questions before we begin? All right. Let's start with our student recognition.
Well, as we know, last May, we had the opportunity to recognize several students in groups for their outstanding work in the spring. However, some of those spring events trickled on into the summer, so tonight, we get to recognize some of our outstanding students from both Libertyville and Vernon Hills. For the FBLA, I'm gonna introduce Diane Phillips, who is the FBLA activity sponsor. Diane?
As Dr. Gilliam said, I was here in the spring to talk about the qualifications that we had, qualifiers for FBLA Nationals. And tonight, I'm here to proudly celebrate the accomplishments of both Libertyville and Vernon Hills. But I am gonna start just to explain a little bit about the size of the competition, and the number, and how proud we are for the results. The FBLA National Competition took place in Chicago, June 29th through July 2nd, and there were over 12,000 participants in the competition from throughout the United States. And there were over 100 competitions that people could compete in, so it was the top of the top that were representing the state of Illinois. And we had three teams, two from Vernon Hills and one from Libertyville, that finished in the top one or two or three in their individual event. So what I'm gonna do now is I'm going to ask the Vernon Hills students to come up. So come on up. And, let's see. Yes. And I'd like for them to introduce themselves, and then I'll talk a little bit about the road that got them to where they are, or where they ended up, so.
Hello, I'm Oliver. I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Michael. I'm a junior.
Hi, my name is Derek Zhang. I'm a junior as well.
Hi, my name is Ashwini Deshpande, and I'm a junior.
Hello, my name is Pavani Pandavada, and I'm a junior.
Hello, my name is Appraj Thaddei Raju, and I'm also a junior.
So we're blessed with them all being juniors, because they can compete this year and next. And they've set the bar pretty high to finish first or second in their event in the nation. So I don't know, the sky's the limit for what's going to happen this year, and their senior year. So we'll start with our young lady team. They competed in business ethics, and they placed first in area competition, and then moved on to represent us in state. And they finished second in state. And the top two qualifiers in the state competition are able to move on to Nationals. And at Nationals, they finished second in the nation. So we're... And our young men team competed in emerging business issues, and they again placed first in area, and moved on to state, and finished second in state, and were able to represent us proudly at Nationals, and they finished first in the nation. So I'm very proud of the accomplishments that they have shown, and we are just blessed with really, really good teams at FBLA Libertyville and at FBLA Vernon Hills. And I think we kinda did a lot of activities together, Libertyville and Vernon Hills, when we were at Nationals, and it was really fun to get to see the talent and the wonderful students that we have. So I have certificates to give.
John, can you have those out? I'm gonna make the picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, can you get us all on here?
Or do we need to move the podium? Here, we can. Stuart, can I take this over?
Yep.
Okay, there we go. Here we go.
Loretta O'Day is the sponsor for the Libertyville group, and she is at a volleyball competition tonight, so I am proud to talk about the accomplishments that LHS FBLA had. Sam Gold, Grant Dean, and Alex Kretkowski excelled this year as FBLA members at LHS. All three have been members since their freshman year. Grant and Sam qualified and went to Nationals last year in e-business. This past year was very successful for the group. Starting at area, the boys took first place in entrepreneurship, and at the state conference, they competed against 19 teams, which equaled 47 students, and placed first as well. At the national conference this past summer, they placed in the top 15 on the first day of competitions, and qualified for the finals in entrepreneurship the next day. They ended up placing third in the nation. So they are all graduates of Libertyville now, so they are in school, hopefully watching this board meeting. But wonderful kids, so we are definitely blessed.
Before everyone goes tonight, this is our favorite thing to do, is to recognize all the great students that we have at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School, and the great work that you do in many ways throughout the year. But we also want to take a moment to thank your parents, because you didn't get here in a vacuum, and we know your parents have supported you, and they've driven you places, and they made sure that you have all those extras, support that you need to be successful. So, parents, we want to stop and give you a round of applause. So, thank you. And we'll be very excited to see how you guys do this. You're wonderful. So, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, you guys are free to stay if you'd like.
But you can go if you want to.
All right. Moving on, District 128 Growth and Measurement Plan.
Well, the board's well aware of the many, many different changes going on in the state from assessment to certification to teacher evaluation. And Dennis Duffy and I would like to give the board just a brief overview of our new Growth and Measurement Plan. That is our teacher evaluation plan. We spent quite a bit of time and effort, both teachers and administrators, and we just rolled that out this fall. And we wanna, we just wanna share some of the highlights with you, give you a chance to ask a few questions. And with the teacher evaluation plan, I think the thing we want to emphasize the most with the plan, if we leave here with anything, it's the idea that we changed the name of our supervision evaluation plan to a growth and measurement plan. And we emphasize we're growth-first in this plan, because we're hoping and we believe that teacher evaluation should be first and foremost about the professional growth of our staff, albeit there is some evaluation to the plan, but the emphasis is really on the growth of the plan. And so, could I ask, Dennis is gonna take us through some of the work we did leading up to it, and I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the plan itself. So Dennis?
Thanks, Al. My name's Dennis Duffy. I'm a social studies teacher at Libertyville High School, been teaching in district for nine years. I was also elected to my third term as union president, and I'm going to go through the steps of this process here, each one of these steps in turn. But I wanted to show you an overview of where we've been, and then, of course, the journey that we've taken thus far. In background, PIRA was a law adopted by the Illinois Legislature and signed by Governor Pat Quinn back in 2010. It required all schools in Illinois to change how they evaluate teachers' and principals' performance. In part, PIRA required every district and union to form a joint committee to review and adopt a research-based teacher evaluation system. PIRA also mandated the inclusion of student growth by fall of 2016, and we begin that task in just under one month, in another joint committee setting, working with the administration and the union. Finally, PIRA mandated statewide the use of a rating scale of excellence, proficiency, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. We've had this mandate in place for several years. Now, after discussion started in 2012, we formed this Growth and Measurement Planning Committee that began meeting in 2013-14, that continued into last year. In our discussions, and again, Al alluded to this just a moment ago, Al and I agreed that whatever direction we went, we wanted to avoid an evaluation tool that was checklist-y or resulted in gotcha observations. We also agreed that the purpose of any evaluation tool was not to dictate how many excellent-rated teachers there were in district, rather, we agreed that the focus must be on teacher growth, growth in their skills, growth in their classroom technique, their planning, and involvement in their building and district activities. Why? Because we both believe that if our teachers continually improve their classroom skills and techniques, our students will be taught more effectively over time. The joint committee examined two major research-based teacher evaluation systems, one developed by Charlotte Danielson, and another developed by Robert Marzano. After we evaluated these two systems, we opted as a joint committee for the Marzano system. And last year, a number of teachers and administrators took part in a pilot of the model adopted by that joint committee, and that committee met then late last year to tweak the model based on the feedback from the pilot members. This slide demonstrates the Growth Measurement Planning Committee, the membership of both union and administration members. Now, you might be wondering why we opted for the Marzano system, and really, there's a couple reasons. The committee liked the focus of Marzano on classroom instruction represented in Domain 1. The committee also thought that the teacher reflection component built into the goal-setting process represented what kind of teachers we have and want in this district. The goal-setting process, as reflected in the professional growth plan, allows for collaboration between a teacher and his or her department supervisor, which is something both sides wanted to encourage as well. Finally, another very attractive piece to this Marzano system was its non-classroom educator model, which would address the unique needs and goals of those certified staff that interact with students outside of the classroom. Now, last year, as I mentioned, there was a pilot that the certified staff took part in, and the red names are the non-committee members that volunteered to take part in the pilot. As you can see between the joint committee members and the participants in the pilot, we've had a lot of teachers and administrators involved in the selection process. Now, I'm gonna invite Al back up to cover the next part of this presentation.
Just wanna go over very, very briefly the plan itself, and how this is going to be implemented this initial year. With the plan, our staff is pretty much aware now that the numbers 4, 3, 9, and 41 are key numbers to the Marzano model, because the number 4 is the number of domains in the Marzano plan, in our Growth and Measurement Plan. And as Dennis mentioned, Domain 1 is classroom strategies and behaviors. This is the most important domain, because that's where the teachers and students interact with each other directly. But prior to that, and in preparation for that kind of interaction, there are three other domains, professionalism, that are important in the Marzano model. So those domains 2, 3, and 4, Domain 2 is the planning and preparing that goes behind the classroom instruction before the teacher walks into the classroom. Domain 3 is the reflective piece about teaching. Without critical reflection about your practice, it's unlikely that you're gonna grow. And this was one of the key factors to the Marzano plan over the Danielson plan that we felt very strongly about, and hence our decision to go with the Marzano model. And then the fourth domain is collegiality and professionalism, all the way from informal professional conversations to formal education with advanced degrees. The number 3, in that 4, 3, 9, 41, in Domain 1, and I don't expect you to be able to read all of this, but in Domain 1, you can see the three color bars at the top. There are three lesson segments in Domain 1. A lesson segment entitled "Involving Routine Events," a lesson segment called "Addressing Content," and a lesson segment called "Enacted on the Spot." And each of those are, those are three parts to any lesson that goes on in a particular classroom. And then within those three domains, or excuse me, under those three lesson segments, there are nine design questions that you see in bold there. And they are that, they are questions to prompt reflection on the part of the teacher. And it's upon these design questions that a teacher selects his or her goal to focus on for the year or the two-year cycle that they might be evaluated on. And then beneath that are 41, if you remember the numbers 4, 3, 9, and 41, under those nine design questions, there are a total of 41 elements that are research-based actions that a teacher can take, or actions that a student can take to enhance the success of their learning. And one way to think about that is that those, if you put together a goal, these are the action steps, the elements are the action steps to help you accomplish that goal, described in one of those nine design questions. As you drill down, one of the things about Marzano is the research base for this is quite significant. You can drill down and get into deeper and deeper about what do we mean about engaging students? What does it mean to keep students engaged, for example? And you can drill down in what are called desired effects, as one way of doing that, putting it in language that a teacher and a student could understand. And then drilling down even further, there is a number of resources. This is the book that every teacher in the district got called Becoming a Reflective Teacher, and in there are protocols or explanations for each design question, excuse me, each element, in terms of what does it mean, for example, to engage students, to keep students engaged, to use academic games as an element. And so, one of the benefits to this model that we didn't have in our prior model is the research that supports this, and the depth of research behind it that we can use as a resource. But all of these, all four of these domains, even though Domain 1 is the most important domain, and Alex, I know these gears won't turn, so, just to highlight a point, but the fact that for one domain to work, they all must be working, and so, for example, for a teacher to be successful in the classroom, to create a learning environment where all students can learn, there's a significant amount of planning and preparation that goes on under Domain 2 for that to happen. For them, for a teacher to plan and prepare adequately, there has to be critical reflection on their part to enhance their instruction. And behind all of that is the professional development they do independently, collectively, formally, and informally. So all of these, all of these gears must turn, and the idea is that all of them are connected, they're all interrelated. So there's a process here that, using this model, where we have our observers, our administrators come into the classroom, and Dennis is gonna give you a little bit of background on that.
Thanks, Al. So, with regard to the observations, non-tenured teachers will undergo at least three observations each school year, one of which may be an informal observation. Tenured teachers will undergo at least two observations in their two-year cycle, one of which may be informal. And again, these are minimums. And this entire evaluation system is going to require a culture shift in our district amongst teachers and evaluators alike. In the past, the fewer observations we underwent, the better. And the more times an evaluator was in our room, the worse we were doing. That was the culture. Under this model, as educators, we choose a goal with our evaluator and must demonstrate progress towards realizing that goal. So how will an evaluator know that we're making progress? Well, by observing us, both formally and informally, through this observation process. Under the new system, teachers can invite evaluators into our classroom through an informal observation tool. So if we have a lesson that's going exactly to what our goal is, we can demonstrate to our supervisor progress towards realizing that goal, and we can invite them in, they can observe exactly what we're doing. The goal-setting process is a little involved, but it's relatively simple. Start in the upper left-hand corner of the chart. We asked teachers to familiarize themselves with the Marzano model, okay? Teachers had to do some homework, and as ironic as that may sound to the students in the room, it was very valuable that they did so, because they needed to familiarize themselves through this entire process. It's all new for them. We were fortunate that the district linked all of the documents that we needed to use for this familiarization process through the D128 staff website, so it was much easier to access, much easier to process. The first step of the process is completion of a personal profile survey. This is that self-assessment referenced earlier, based on the 41 elements, the nine design questions in Domain 1. The personal profile survey is best taken honestly. We all have room to improve in our practice. We all have new teaching methods, to explore techniques to experiment with, a comfort zone to challenge. And it's important to remember that this personal profile survey is part of a research-based model that shows that this personal survey, an individual teacher's self-evaluation is the best means for a teacher to identify his or her strengths and weaknesses. Now, remember too, that this evaluation tool is intended to measure growth, not success, if that makes sense. Measurable growth towards a goal that falls short can still result in a summative rating of excellence because of the measurable growth in the skill. A baseball team can improve over the course of a season. It doesn't have to win the World Series in order for it to have had a successful season. Likewise, a teacher can grow over the course of their one-year or two-year cycle without having to reach the pinnacle of success within that growth cycle, if that makes sense. Identifying the growth as this collaborative, this growth goal is a collaboration between the teacher and his or her evaluator. That doesn't mean one side dictates to the other. Rather, it means discussion and compromise. And in its implementation, this is a key component to the success of this system. Now, PIRA required, as I mentioned earlier, PIRA required the adoption of a four-level summative rating system, this excellent, proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory. These terms up on the screen and their brief description was part and parcel with this adoption of the Marzano system, and we adopted it as well, adapted it rather, to the Marzano model. The process will have evaluators determining a rating for each teacher in each of the four domains, then applying these domain ratings to a summative rating definition that you see here. Please note that to be rated excellent in Domain, to be rated excellent overall, a teacher has to be evaluated as excellent in Domain 1, that's in the classroom, in order to be rated excellent. This reflects the joint committee's belief that excellence in teaching should begin in the classroom. And of course, the other ratings have similar requirements to be proficient. You must be rated proficient in Domain 1, and excellent or proficient in the other three domains. Now, I have been assured by district and building level administrators that in application, this model is not intended to decrease the number of excellent-rated teachers in the district, rather, it's intended to challenge teachers to grow in their profession within a research-based system. Now, I trust the district and building administrators to apply this new Growth and Measurement model in a fair and consistent manner.
And then just briefly, we've had a number of follow-up steps since we rolled this out in August, where we've had department meetings, lunch and learns, we've offered some classes for the district-wide, as well as professional conversations. And then we have as a resource, a link, well, can you go to our D128 staff page? On that staff page is an evaluation link. If you go to that evaluation link, that brings you to our professional learning resources. And these are all the parts that go into this evaluation model. And any one of these links here either goes to the parts that we shared with you this evening, and as well as the forms. And so, this, although having had a pilot year last year with a handful of teachers, this is our first year rolling this out, and actually, literally have had just in the last week or two evaluators in classrooms starting this process. So we're very excited about... a link, well, can you go to our D-128 staff page? On that staff page is an evaluation link. If you go to that evaluation link, that brings you to our professional learning resources. And these are all the parts that go into this evaluation model. And any one of these links here either goes to the parts that we shared with you this evening and as well as the forms. And so, this, although having had a pilot year last year with a handful of teachers, this is our first year rolling this out and actually literally have had just a, in the last week or two, evaluators in classrooms starting this process. So, we're, we're very excited about the process and what this is going to mean to our professional growth in the district. So, just thought this would be important for you to be aware of and what's going on in our district. So, in terms of teacher evaluation, so we appreciate your time with this.
Just a couple of overview comments, and then we'll take any questions from the board. Pat was with us on opening day, as he usually is as the board president, and Alan Dennis did this presentation for the entire staff. And I want to underscore a couple of things for the board and the public. One, as Dennis has noted, this is a quantum shift in teacher evaluation to a research-based, growth-oriented model around how students are doing. So, the second piece here is this has required an inordinate amount of time and planning with the administration and Dennis and the union working through this process. The list of folks on this group that you saw earlier in slide, second, I think the second slide that we had up when Dennis was speaking are, are some of the best and brightest that we have in the district across all teaching domains and across building-level administration. And so, I don't want you guys to leave up here tonight without saying how much we appreciate the work that you've all done on this because this is a Herculean task and lots of conversation moving forward. And we've arrived at a place that will continue to serve the students in this district very well for many years to come because it's focused on helping our teachers continually improving in a partnership with administrators moving forward. So, Alan Dennis, thanks for your leadership role. I know Marina and John have been integrally involved in this too. So, it was a great job on this and a great job of the staff that worked on this. And I think we can be very proud of what you've established here and the resources that we have set up for teachers before we ever launched the model. And we feel like we're in a real good place moving forward. So, I think we should give you a round of applause and then we'll see what questions the board has. Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just, just one. When you made the two choices, you, you picked one versus a hybrid of the two. Was that because the, there's a package that you licensed, or is it just a matter of reading a book and using it?
One of the requirements that was that the, the model we used had to be research-based. And if we, if we took a hybrid of the two, then I think the, the research behind either of those models would, would break down. So, we, we felt like we needed to pick between Marzano and Danielson are the most common, but there are, there are several others that we could have picked from, and we did briefly review those. But we felt like we, we couldn't create our own model or take pieces of another model because we had to stick with the state requirement of it being research-based.
So, there's no continuing licensing or royalty or anything like that?
No, in fact, we're, we're actually, we're working with the Marzano Institute, and they're providing us resource and training both for teachers and evaluators. So, we are, we contract with them in a sense.
So, so there's support and resources that go along with each specific one. And by you guys picking this one, you're getting the whole package with it that supports the program.
Yeah. One of the nice things about the Marzano package, besides the growth, the personal profile, the goal development, all of these aspects, and that philosophical approach that seems to fit our district so well, is, as Al referenced earlier, you can drill down into this system and just keep going. They've got online resources down to videos for every element. If you're a teacher, you want to see how Marzano conceptualizes games in the classroom, academic games in the classroom. There's video of teachers leading a class and that. There's questionnaires. There's additional research. And you can just keep going down as deep as you need to, to fully encapsulate this concept. And it's really attractive. And, and quite frankly, we liked the evaluation model that would lead to positive discussion on concerning growth as opposed to a kind of gotcha evaluation, which we felt might come from other evaluation systems.
Do you foresee this having any impact in the way that we're doing the performance recognition bonuses and that as a system? Do you think that would be something that we're...
At this point, I don't think so. The, in, you know, we certainly haven't discussed it, but I don't see a connection between the evaluation, professional evaluation, which we need to maintain regardless, this is state mandate after all, and our, the system whereby we can earn some sort of merit bonus only because we had that system in place, that bonus process in place under the previous system. And there wasn't any, there wasn't any issue there. I, I don't perceive an issue going forward with, under a new system either.
I think if things were, went, continued to go really well there, then students would continue to achieve at higher levels and will continue to reach our performance recognition bonuses as we retool those with every contract and rebalance. And we use a five-year kind of rolling average on that. And as the students do better each year, that's wonderful. So, as teachers continue to improve, students continue to do better, it's all good. So, that would be kind of the connection between the two, what we already had established and where we're moving.
One quick comment, two questions. First of all, I think this, I thought this program was awesome. And that leads me to my question. Did you guys have any idea what it's like to be a teacher?
No.
Or kind of.
I mean, it's not as easy as you think, right? And then, just one other question. I'm just curious. Is student feedback in any way, shape, or form incorporated into the teacher evaluation process? Because I know on a lot of college campuses now, they don't let you out of the class unless you fill out a survey and rate your professor. So, of course, anybody looks at those the next semester when they sign up. But I'm just curious.
Personally, not formally, I use a lot of student feedback in terms of part of a, because I want to, I, I want my teacher to reflect on their learning. I want them to reflect. Because after all, they're, they're professional students. They've been going through, they know what good teaching looks like. And who else am I going to ask in the classroom except my students? What does good teaching look like? Was this a good lesson? Was this a good activity? Did this benefit your learning in government? Did this help you understand this idea? This was my goal. And so, while there's not a formal process, I think a lot of teachers use that reflection from the students to gain better understanding and fine-tune their, their practice.
Okay, great. So, thanks. And, you know, thanks again. There's a big, long list of people that put in a lot of hard work to do this. These things just don't come out of a, you know, a, a package and you unwrap it and just say, all right, now we're going to do it. So...
And this work, and this work was done all over and above their regular classroom and regular administrative experience. This is all kind of a value add on top of the work that they do every day. So, great job.
Okay, thanks. All right. We're about, almost halfway through the first semester, right? Let's hear about the great things going on in school.
Okay. So, I'm going to inform you guys about athletics at LHS. So, this is super exciting, but our football team is undefeated right now with a 5-0 record as of Friday because we just beat Stevenson. And then, this Friday, we're playing Lake Zurich for our homecoming game. So, I know everyone's really excited for that. Boy soccer finished second at the PepsiCo Showdown Championship Game last night at DePaul University, losing to Lions in double overtime. And then, a sophomore at LHS named Laura Zhang qualified for the 2016 Olympics in Brazil for rhythmic gymnastics. So, that's really exciting. I think that's really awesome. As far as academics go, we just had Spanish foreign exchange students here for three weeks the past month. And then, October 10th, we have French foreign exchange students coming.
Hi. In other news, homecoming preparation is in full swing with this week being our homecoming week on Friday. And so, float building starts up this entire week with student council working every day after school to make those wonderful floats. You see in the parade. Window painting was already done this weekend, which I saw a high turnout for most clubs' activities there. Our theme this year is Sweet Home Chicago. So, it'll be pretty fun to walk around downtown and see all of our creative window displays and our floats this year. And lastly, our Sweet 16 Court was chosen. And as a side note, congratulations to our very own Amelia Schmidt being on it. Yesterday, the 23rd Annual Red Ribbon Cooz Classic 5K Race and Walk was held at the LHS Football Stadium. So, if any of you guys were out there, just noticed it. And lastly, the new charging couches by the main entrance have been a big hit. I've seen a lot of kids using it between, between periods and before school. And the new chairs and the mash are also greatly appreciated. So...
The couches are really awesome. They're really comfortable to us. It's nice.
All right. So, in regards to LHS extracurriculars, LHS welcomed several new clubs this year, including Junior State of America and UNICEF. And an interesting effort that UNICEF had this year was its penny war, and it hosted it outside of the LHS cafeteria. And it was just to aid in child nutrition. And participants could only contribute with pennies, but they were actually penalized for using other coins or bills. And the teams were based on graduating class. So, this really emphasized the idea of everybody contributing a small amount for a common goal. And I think that's the goal of UNICEF, to get everybody involved. And it was cool that they brought this to the school level. And this Thursday, the, a group of senior girls will be participating in the Powderpuff Football Game. And all of the money from the ticket sales will be used to fund our school's Wildcat Initiative for sharing during holidays at dinner this December. And in terms of homecoming, which is coming up this week, and all the football games, LHS has been trying to integrate the student body and make sure that all of the students find their place and can find their own way to cheer their football team. And it's just creating a nice school spirit already in, in the fall. And the Dungeons and Dragons Club had its first meeting this month as well. So, that's all for LHS.
In case you hadn't noticed, our Powderpuff is right now.
I hear all the noise.
We can actually see the scoreboard from here. I can't see the score, however. Oh, okay. That's where Emily is.
All right. So, for Vernon Hills, we would like to recognize our National Merit semifinalists, of which are Ari Bard, Nikhil Chakrabarti, Emily, who is currently playing at Powderpuff, Zach, and Finley Lau, Isaiah Lu, Alexandra Spence, and Lucy Lu. As for our commended students for the National Merit Contest, we have Aditya Lurie, Kevin Boz, me, Jinji Cheng, Brandon Cody, Sari Lee, John Powell, Jonathan Stein, and Connor Sullivan. So, we'd just like to extend our congratulations to all of those students for doing really well. Also, on September 10th, we had VHHS's very first senior parking lot party initiated by Dr. Gilliam, and it was a great hit among the students. All the seniors got to go outside and we got to eat grilled hamburgers and hot dogs that Dr. Gilliam grilled for us. And it was a really great party. And we had like...
No salmonella?
No, not at all. So, it was a really great opportunity and a lot of people enjoyed it. As for the recent issue of race at VHHS that made its way into the local media lately, Dr. Gilliam held a principals' round table for students to speak about their own experiences in the high school. And the event was held during lunches and was well-attended by students of all ages and races. So, I think it was a really great opportunity for students to go around and talk a little bit about how they felt about what's going on. Also, there's a new program that is initiated by Mr. Young at VHHS, which is the extension of the Cougar Table. So, what he's doing is that we're introducing student involvement in this program. And we have students with study hall periods, and those students were emailed. So, there's no longer just a desk in our current IRC. We now have a separate classroom where these students can receive aid. And the program is focusing on student involvement to allow for that personal interaction where students are able to create relationships with their peers and also aid their peers. And also, this is a great opportunity for underclassmen to gain volunteering hours for NHS. And we're looking forward to see the potential that it will have. And it sounds like a really great program. As for the activities, we also have Homecoming Week at VHHS. And ours is Harry Potter themed. So, today was actually Harry Potter Day, and it was really exciting. We also have Preppy Day, Twin Day, and our Whiteout. Also, we have class color competition on Thursday, which is the biggest thing we have at VHHS. So, we're all very excited for that.
It's huge.
It is, yes. And we also have a pep rally on Friday and the homecoming game Friday night. And we couldn't do window painting this year because of the newly bulletproofed glass at our school. So, instead, we had a banner contest. So, every class made their own banner that we can hang up on the windows. We have the dance on Saturday. And something really cool about our Homecoming Week is that we're encouraging students to donate books. And with that donation, classes can gain points for their house, since it's Harry Potter themed. And that will lead up to which class will ultimately win at the pep assembly this Friday. So, yep.
In fine arts news, rehearsal for the musical is well underway. You can watch Emily perform in Little Shop of Horrors on October 30th and 31st, appropriately on Halloween, and the following weekend as well, the first weekend of November. The freshman sophomore play, it was our, we started that just a couple of years ago. It's been a really big hit ever since. Thirty Reasons Not to Be in a Play, ironic, that was on the 26th, just this past weekend. There were two shows and it was well-attended. And music, very busy in music this season. ALMEA auditions on October 5th for band, orchestra, and choir. That is, you know, the Illinois Music Education Association. Musicians and vocalists audition for their district and state choir, band, or orchestra. And only the best make it. And Vernon Hills has had a phenomenal track record. You know, we're up there. I remember, I remember two years ago, we had more students from our school make it to all-state and all-state honors than any other. And this is, we're like a third of the size as some of the schools in our state. And so, that's always really exciting. And our chamber choir retreat was this past weekend. I'm exhausted from it. It's, it's a, it's a really significant weekend for our chamber choir. Lots of rehearsal, lots of bonding, and it, it draws the choir together. And, you know, it makes us who we are. And it's exciting. And so, October 8th is our first fall concert for choir. Band is the following week, October 15th, and orchestra is November 17th. And all-state theater, we had two students who auditioned and were selected to perform in Rent in January. That was Senior Aubrey Black in the cast and Junior Kyle Greenberg in the crew. And Nick Dante is a freshman. This is pretty awesome. He performed at Marriott in Lincolnshire as Billy Elliot in a production of Billy Elliot. He was the main character. And he received, or he was nominated for the Jeff Award for his role for the performance at Drury Lane. And he was nominated for Best Actor in a Principal Role in a Musical. And he is set to perform productions of Billy Elliot in Boston and Tampa this semester. So, sports news, as they mentioned, 5-0. Vernon Hills too, this is amazing. We're both 5-0 this year, which is awesome in football. And congratulations to our girls and boys cross-country teams taking second and fourth place respectively in the 2A division of the first-to-the-finish invite in Peoria. And Shane Williamson was selected for Lake Shore Athlete of the Month by the Chicago Tribune. That is a huge honor for him. We recognized that at our assembly last week on Friday. And our soccer team, more wins than last year. They've been phenomenal this year. Recently defeated Lake Zurich in an impressive match in the NSC crossover competition. And lastly, at our assembly last Friday, we acknowledged last year's boys volleyball team for taking second in state, their best performance to date. And we recognized Coach Curry and the returning varsity members from last year for their amazing performance.
All right. Great job. There's a lot going on. Okay, superintendent's report. Thank you.
Okay. First, I'd like to report that we had our first monthly lunch meeting with the student board reps and... I think they all took pie at the end, which is good, so we got them in the tradition here. It's always good conversation for the public, the two building principals, myself. And usually Dr. Gruddy from the board or another board member meet with the students once a month. It gives us a chance to get to know them. And also talk about things that are going on in the school and ask them questions as well, so. That's always fun for us, so that was a great time. And also, I'll just note for the record that with my fuzzy superintendent math, it appear, it occurs to me. That District one twenty-eight is now ten and zero in football this year, if we add those two together. Which I understand is a first in the history of the school district since Vernon Hills has been open and of course Libertyville's been. Playing football for longer, so that's really an exciting way to start the year, so congratulations to. All the coaches and coaching staff and of course, the students on the teams. That's great and we're looking forward to seeing them continue to roll right into the playoffs this year. The students mentioned earlier, the national merit finalist, semifinalist from Vernon Hills. But let me take a minute and also read the Libertyville names. Alexander Van Ruden, Daniel Zhao, David Stone, Brian Vickers, Elliott Stonkey. Hannah Louitso, Emma Williams, Jason G, and Hannah Manich. And these talent, along with the Vernon Hills students that were mentioned earlier. These academically talented high school students have an opportunity to continue in the competition for approximately seven thousand four hundred. National merit scholarships worth more than thirty-two million dollars, so good luck to our students. And we also mentioned Vernon Hills students that were national merit commended students. This year, these students are among thirty-four thousand high performers on the PSAT. At the national level who scored at or above the committed student selection index score of two oh two. So the Libertyville students to add to the Vernon Hills students who were committed students were Gabriel Alessna, Andrew Fink. Jared Hooch, Jesse O, Jacqueline Ovo sapien. Nahar Fadke, Connor Polk, Eli Roller, Lauren Taylor, Carrie Waldvogel, Claire Williams, Ken Wu, and Andrew Zhang. So congratulations to all of our students at both high schools. The following VHHS students were named September Cougar Class Act Award winners. Kevin Bose, Cassidy Gillespie DePinto, Sarah Kane, Samantha Colber. Connor McNamara, Serena Panos, Brina Schusterman, Andrew Smith, Nicholas Terry, and Cheyenne South. The students touched again on the Illinois High School Theater Festival, but it's worth saying again because we also had some Libertyville students involved. VHHS students Aubrey Black and Kyle Greenberg and LHS students Anthony Malunas. And Anna DeNoya have been chosen to participate in the two thousand sixteen Illinois High School Theater Festival production of Rent. Anthony, Anna, and Aubrey will be members of the cast and Kyle will be a member of the crew. Student actors, musicians, and technicians from across the state will rehearse and construct the set during the weekends through the fall. Performances will take place January seventh through ninth at Illinois State University. VHHS science teacher Craig Baumgarts was recognized by the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. For being an influential teacher and having an impact, important impact on two thousand fifteen VHHS graduate Justin Yim. And as noted earlier, LHS sophomore Laura Zing and the US rhythmic gymnast have qualified for the two thousand sixteen Olympic Games in Rio de Janeiro, Brazil. Laura's eighth place finish is the best finish for a US gymnast in the all-around at the world championships. For rhythm and rhythm, rhythmic gymnastics, so congratulations to her wonderful job and that'll be exciting to watch that. Unfold and give us a personal touch at the upcoming Olympics. Next on the superintendent's report, we touched on the performance recognition before. And the board will note at our meeting last month that we indicated after collecting the data that we had met all four of the criteria. For the performance recognition bonus, again, that is the number of students taking advanced placement classes. And the percentage of students scoring at three, four, or five level. And we crushed that threshold again. Our composite ACT scores for the district, we are up again at both schools and the number of participants in student activities. As noted last month, since the state is no longer giving the Prairie State Achievement Exam, that's no longer one of our categories. And once we either stay with park or we use another measurement like SAT. Did you notice that nice placement reader there? The SAT test at some point in the future. Then we'll work with Dennis and the union the next time around to incorporate that in. So what I'm going to ask the board to do tonight is to authorize the performance recognition bonus and again, that's a one point five percent. One-time bonus on teachers' base salary. It does not accumulate, does not move to the next year. I believe this is our fourth year, maybe, our fourth year in the performance recognition bonus and we are unique across the state. The way we do the performance recognition bonus and. We know that it has been modeled in a number of school districts and we're happy to share that with anyone that's interested. So I would be looking for a motion to approve authorization of the performance recognition bonus this year. If approved tonight, that will be paid right at the beginning of September or December, just in time for the holiday season. So looking for a motion and a second and approval.
I move that we have approval for the performance recognition bonus.
Second.
Atson?
Aye.
Dally Polly?
Aye.
Gruddy?
Aye.
Luze?
Aye.
Stan?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Just one final comment on that. Our student achievement over, we do a kind of a rolling ten-year comparison. And as we shared with the staff on opening day, our ten-year comparisons on advanced placement in ACT. Are dramatic in the increases that we've had over ten years and that's a great testament, of course, to our students that have gone through the schools. The outstanding teaching that we have, the leadership of the administrators and the support from the communities and our parents. So that is really a good news story for District one twenty-eight and both our high schools. Next on the superintendent's report tonight is our annual applications for recognition of our two high schools. And so I would be looking for a motion to approve those applications, so we can move them forward.
I motion to approve the applications for the recognition.
Second.
Roll call please.
Dally Polly?
Aye.
Gruddy?
Aye.
Luze?
Aye.
Stan?
Aye.
Atson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, great, thank you. Libertyville under donations this evening, Libertyville Athletics received another donation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. This donation was by the same family and they wish to remain anonymous. The monies were deposited into the LHS. Athletic activity account. Some of the projects that have been completed with the previous fifty thousand dollar donation. Were varsity softball scoreboard touchscreen with the LHS athletic history and if you haven't seen that over at LHS, it's. It's really cool. Bryant's done a great job with that. Team picture display in the front foyer at the entrance to the main gym. And awards boards that have been installed in the main gym. So Bryant, Kelly, the athletic director at Libertyville Marina. And the district certainly want to thank the anonymous donor for their second fifty thousand dollar donation. And the board will note in your packets this evening that we had five foyer requests this month. So Pat, with that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, one of those, by the way, looked like it was, was there, were there two requests for this same kind of mission on the parking?
Yes, one was an extension of the first one, that's correct.
Okay, alright, so would anybody from the public like to speak? Again, I'd ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes if you could. And just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Here's extra copies here. Good evening. My name is Mike Collins and I live on River Ben Road in Libertyville. First off, as a former US Marine officer, I'd like to acknowledge you for doing the pledge of allegiance. I haven't heard that in quite some time, but I did remember most of the words.
Thank you for your service, by the way.
The purpose of my time tonight is, it's an awareness to bring you aware and I know you're all aware of. The significant issue we're facing as residents with taxes. But I want to deal with a couple of facts for you that I feel are most appropriate. Number one, I'm representing many homes on the River Ben corridor. Our taxes have grown from thirty-five to forty-four percent over the past. Number of years and I know the board here is only a part of that. Our, our goal here is to create awareness of this particular issue. So the taxes have gone up dramatically. To a point where, I'll get to that in a moment. Everyone says, well, just do the appeal process. Well, we've all been down that road. We're doing the appeal process. But the appeals go, the assessors go up, the assessors go down. That's not the issue. It is the significant tax rate. That all of us as homeowners, with exception of the students, are facing. And it is a rather significant issue and I'll come back to the impact here in a moment. On page three is just the tax rates and I know you all get this in the mail. But I put there just so you recognize the percents that the residents are paying for the middle school as well as the high school. And it is a significant issue. On the last page of the handout is my personal real estate taxes. Now, I'm very fortunate. I have a four-bedroom home, it's a nice home off of River, River Road. But you'll see on page four of the handout, our taxes have gone from twenty-two thousand dollars when we purchased the home to probably well over forty thousand dollars this year. In our real estate taxes. We've been around to the different municipalities, talking to the different boards, but I bring this to your attention for the following reasons. I recently read an article that stated that enrollment is down and as a village, we love our village, right? We really like where we live. But one may consider our enrollment is down because families can't come into this neighborhood and afford it. Families that can't come in and buy a home in our neighborhood because they have young children and these, they just can't afford to pay the taxes. And once again, I know you're only a small part of this, but you are a part of that. It's significant. In our neighborhood, there's thirty-three homes. We're fortunate. We have a nice neighborhood, nice homes. Of the thirty-three homes, thirty-five percent of them are for sale. And all those homes that are for sale, no one is walking into the homes and looking at these homes. They're not selling. Nine months on the market, not a foot, not one foot in the door. Why is that? Who's going to pay forty thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes? It's impacting retired people that want to leave, they can't leave, they can't sell their homes. And once again, this is just an issue of awareness for, for this board, for other boards, we're going around to see what we can do together. Are there things that we can do together to have a big impact into this? Because if you look five years from now. Or ten years from now, are these young kids going to be able to afford the homes in our village? I don't think so. So as a community and as a board, let's pay close attention to this. It's really, really important for us. Because we can't sell the homes and the young kids aren't going to be able to move back into our homes and I think we all as citizens of this village that we love. Have to pay really close attention to this because it's turning into somewhat of a crisis. Okay, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
How's everybody doing tonight? First off, let me just say that you guys are very freaking impressive. I like, I like seeing that. And are you okay? Were you choking or laughing?
Yeah, I was choking a little bit.
I don't know if anybody noticed that. I wanted to go over and try to help her because I didn't know what was going on. But I'm here tonight to.
Just to, just to name an address for the record. I hate to ask.
I'm sorry. Desmond Clark, twenty-one ninety North Shadow Creek Court, Vernon Hills, Illinois. But I think we all know who, what's been going on the last few weeks with the situation with me and my son in here at Vernon Hills High School. So I won't go into those details. What I want to go into is what I've learned since from people bringing the information to me. One is a tunnel investigation that was going on, that went on here. That my family would like to understand what was the outcome of that investigation. We've also had other students reach out to us and want to tell their story about the different things that they faced when, when going to school here. And have that brought to light. Also, it was brought to light that Libertyville Administrator Don Johnson had a, had a case where it was some racial tension where he had to fight to keep his job. Also, just last night, I had two visitors to my house and one brought to my attention that the school. Somebody at the Libertyville, on the Libertyville football team made a racially derogatory statement about. Another football team that was predominantly African-American and. Also, the second visitor last night said that he had a uncomfortable. Talk with a administrator here at this school. And then I had a Mexican-American that approached me Friday night at the football game. Telling me thank you for what I'm doing, but also told me something that his son was going through here at this high school. The reason that I bring this up is because I think I've been put in a situation that now I have to become. The spokesman or the, the person that's standing up for some of these individuals who may not want to come out and say these things. But now that has been open, they're willing to come out and say these things to me, so. I guess what I'm here to say is that we need to have a very open and frank discussion about race relations and diversity. Here in, in the district. Also, what I found out is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's no diversity training programs. At either one of the high schools here in the district. There's no student mentoring going on here at, at the district with the two high schools. And we need to have a discussion for what is the best practices to promote a better diverse situation within Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School. There was a statement given by the board saying that we need to be heard in the proper form. So I came tonight because I figured this is the proper form to, to speak about it. And I'm asking for a timeframe to, to meet, to discuss a concrete plan of action that, that will lead to implementation of the best practices. Hopefully, we can get to that within the next two weeks. And if you're open to ideas and if I have another thirty to forty-five seconds. I would say that we, we probably need to have an independent party to come in and. Do a staff and student cultural survey so we can get an understanding of where we at and get a baseline for where we at now, so we can see where we need to go. Secondly, there's a diversity training. If it hadn't been researched yet, I've been doing a little research from Corn Fairy called Accepting Differences. This has worked at a lot, a lot of large corporations and I believe that it'll be appropriate for you guys to look into that to see will it work here at the district level. And also, I would recommend TALKS mentoring and TALKS is a acronym for transferring a little, a little knowledge systematically. Something that I use with my eighty-eight ways youth program to mentor a total of thirteen schools from two thousand eight to two thousand and twelve. And I can get you reports from those schools to show, show you how it helped that student body to grow with diversity. And just overall behavior, behavior issues, so. From everything that me and my family have been through, one thing that we want to keep out in front of us is that we always want to be an example. And not the example, if you know what I mean. And I want the same thing for Vernon Hills High School. I don't have any kids going to Libertyville High School, but you are part of the district. But I have another three kids that probably will be coming up through this high school. And I want to see that some of this stuff is, is handled better, different, and the best way possible going forward.
Alright, thank you very much for your comments.
Mr. Clark, thanks again for coming this evening. We've had some initial conversation about moving that discussion forward. And we will certainly do that in the next couple of weeks and we think it's important, as, as we've both said, we. And over the last week or so, that it is important to move that conversation forward and if there are things we can do and ways we can. Improve in the area of diversity and sensitivity and awareness. Then we're certainly open to having that discussion and looking at some of those things, so thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, and I just want to add, I think, I hope I speak on behalf of everybody on the board. You know, you guys may realize, you may not have been at graduation, but I do get a chance to speak at, at graduation most years when I'm here. And honestly, one of the things I really try to include in that speech is some element of diversity. And I do that on purpose for two reasons. One, I think it's essential that each and every student that attends our two, two high schools feels welcome and warm here. And I think we try very hard to do that and if we can do that better, again, I believe I'm speaking on behalf of everybody here. We are committed to finding ways to do that. But the second thing I honestly believe is important there is honestly, this whole concept of diversity is important because it's really that. Those differences of opinions, the different ways of thinking, it's the different places we all grew up and the cultures that we came from. That makes life rich, okay? I mean, I say all the time, thank goodness everybody isn't like me and wasn't raised like me because it might not be nearly as interesting a place if it was. So I hope we can all take advantage of that and again, I, I welcome your input and, you know, I, I know with, with Prentice and the team here. My hope is that, that a lot of good comes out of this, so I just want to. So I just want to add my commitment and, and, and thanks. Okay? Um, moving on to more routine matters. Consent vote agenda is listed. We did review this earlier in the month. Um, I believe there was one or two additions to that in your packet, but if I could ask if we approve the consent vote agenda. Motion.
I move, I move to approve the, uh, the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Not roll call, please.
Rudy.
Hi.
Louis.
Hi.
Monsted.
Hi.
Addison.
Hi.
Delly Faly.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Um, program and personnel, um, Alan is not here, um...
Karen's going to take us through.
Absence of Chairperson Maurer, um, the first item that needs, uh, do you want me to list each one? Is that how she...
No, she, uh, actually...
The educational tour request.
Yeah, just, just approve them in a single motion.
Okay. So, um, I'd like to, uh, ask for a motion to approve the educational tour request as listed.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
All right, roll call, either way.
Louis.
Hi.
Monsted.
Hi.
Addison.
Hi.
Delly Faly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, the second item, uh, that we need to vote on is the employment of employees as listed under, uh, but agree. Uh, can someone, I'd like that we have a motion to...
I make a motion to, um, uh, accept the, uh, the two employees as listed.
I second.
Any discussion?
Not a roll call, please.
Monsted.
Hi.
Addison.
Hi.
Delly Faly.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Louis.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Nothing else? Okay, facilities and finance, Chairperson Bax.
Thank you. Uh, nothing to vote on, but we just have a couple of discussion items here. Uh, the first one being the fiscal year, uh, 2016 tax levy calendar and discussion.
Yes, the calendar is basically, um, will be very crucial to our process had we needed the levy hearing. Or still needs to adopt an aggregate levy 20 days before the adoption of the levy, so those dates are key as we move forward with our discussions. And the second item on the levy is information that was requested at the FNF committee meeting earlier this month as to some options and, uh, impact of, um, some of the abatements that we have planned for and the impact that those abatements would have on our tax rates and our tax extension when compared to the prior year's tax base and extension. Then, um, there's also another worksheet that has been enclosed in the information that was sent to you, which was based on some preliminary information that I had from the township assessors on what our equalized assessment would be this year. Obviously, those are very preliminary numbers. Those are still being calculated and put together, but at this time, it is estimated that at least Libertyville Township, um, the areas that are in our school district would see about a 4 to 5% increase in equalized assessment. Once again, um, new construction is limited, but I do want to remind you that do, we do have an annexation that will be reflected on our tax rolls this year.
And yes, that's Lancaster, um, annexation which was, uh, decided after we appealed, after it was appealed through the court system. So they have joined us, um, this year. Just a couple of other notes and then, of course, any comments or questions from you. I think what we'd ask you to do, you ask us for some additional information after, uh, probably a second, two-hour discussion on, on the levy and the budget. Uh, I think it's important that the public knows that, um, the board spends the amount of time that you spend and the depth that you spend in terms of, of working on the budget and the levy, which really provides the funding for the budget, really drives the budget, uh, during the course of the year. Those, uh, discussions are very deep, uh, they're as lengthy as they need to be, and we're, and we start early because the levy, uh, doesn't officially need to be adopted until, um...
The end of December.
Yeah, to the end of December. So we've had a history, at least over the past few years, of starting that discussion in the middle of the summer, um, where we can really focus on that. And, and again, the board's had some, you know, really, uh, deep and I think very meaningful discussion on the tax levy, and as we move forward, we're trying to balance that again, against some of the things that may be coming in the state. For example, uh, potential property tax freeze, uh, potential, uh, local districts picking up, uh, part of the state pension cost for teachers and administrators. Um, and there are several other things on the list of things that could be combined. So, um, it's challenging not only for our board but, but, um, other school boards across the state as we're trying to anticipate what the state, uh, might do and still make sure we have adequate funding to drive the great programs that, um, we offer for our students moving forward. So, uh, we want to compliment the board for that time, and I think what we'd ask you to do tonight, we've given you some additional information now, uh, from our discussion to look at our options in making that decision, uh, moving forward, and we would come back in October at our, um, FNF meeting, Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, uh, in October, and we would continue that, um, discussion moving toward a decision point, um, you know, someplace in the next month or so, um, moving forward. So, um, thanks for your good work on that, and yes, thanks for you and the business, um, office staff for gathering the information that the board needs, uh, to consider, uh, what the levy might be. So, open for comments and questions from the board.
So can you just clarify for me that I didn't quite understand the difference between the two worksheets?
Okay. The first worksheet is just to see the impact the abatements on not abating anything would have if everything was frozen. So what basically it is, is using the FY14 information and including an increase or decrease in the tax rate and in the amount collected, uh, if the abatements had, were, were to be restored or were to continue, right? So it's just using FY14 as a comparative basis. So, um...
It's FY14 EAV.
Uh, that is correct, and FY14 levy too, because everything is the same except the fact that either you would have an abatement, a partial abatement, or a full abatement.
Okay.
Okay, so there are three options provided. Uh, one is abating just the bond and interest. Option, um, two is a catch-up.
Catch-up.
Yes. Option three is nothing, and then option four is catch-up amount abated, but it would be done in the bond and interest levy as opposed to in the capped fund levy so that you could maintain your extension basis. What it does, that if you were to, uh, let's say the board agreed upon a catch-up, uh, amount to be abated, you have two choices. Either because we have a bond and interest levy, you could either take it out of the capped funds, which are your operating funds, or you could take it out of bond and interest. The bottom line is the impact on the taxpayer would be the same, except it gives the district the ability to maintain its extension. So you recall when we did the abatement three years ago, two years ago on the catch-up, we talked about going back three years. So basically, you're maintaining the base by doing that. So that's on abating. That is correct. Thank you.
So, can you use this speed? Let's get it. Okay, Bax, a moment.
I can go in more detail if you want to.
Well, so what, again, the plan is to review this in committee next month, is that right?
That is correct.
All right, so we don't need to go into it all in detail. I guess I just don't understand, I, I thought you were saying option four on worksheet one is just taking it out of the different fund?
Yes. It's the same thing.
I said it's increased, so now I'm looking at the increase from 2014. I don't see it from 2016 anymore, it's on 2015.
You do. Option two?
Okay.
Option two and option four are the same.
Oh, okay, I got it.
The only thing that is different is you will see that in the first row, that's the amount that is done.
That's fine. I was going to turn to worksheets, that's right.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so in the October FNF, uh, we need, actually, we need to approve this in the next board meeting.
Correct.
But the assumption would be we would come out of October FNF with a plan.
Yes, because if there is going to be any action on your part, which I don't foresee happening, that would require us to have a levy hearing. Um, there are a lot of other things that need to happen during the time that you would approve it and have the levy hearing too. You have to publish notices and things like that. So it is important that it be approved at the October committee meeting or at least have some direction there.
So this is our homework between now and then?
It is, yes.
Self-imposed, self-imposed, by the way. Okay.
All right, so I'm going to ask the same question I asked about you yesterday. The difference between worksheet one and worksheet two?
Worksheet one...
One and the EAV is different, right?
Yes, right.
Say that again?
In option, in worksheet one, we're using the equalized assessment from tax year 2015. I'm sorry, 14, which is a known factor.
All right, so where's that number? Is that 2676?
Okay, that number is your, uh, 2676, yes.
But that's the same on both pages.
In the first two columns, if you go onto options, you will see differences, 2766.
On the second sheet, right?
Yes. In both sheets, what you have is information for fiscal, of a tax year 13, you have information for tax year 14, and then you have an estimated number for tax year 15.
In worksheet two.
Yes.
So let me ask one question, though.
Yes.
All right, that's why I was probably not getting it. So the second one assumes the EAV is going up?
Yes.
Okay. So then I also have to assume if I had a $300,000 house on worksheet one, my $300,000 house on worksheet two is actually going to go up in value?
It is, yes, by 4%.
So the reality of it is, if I'm a taxpayer, I'm still going up more than 5.36% probably.
Not necessarily.
No.
Well, it's getting all the ins and outs, but, well, let's just make sure, because the only way the EAV goes up without any new kind of new construction is everybody's house must be...
Its assessment goes up.
Yeah, your assessment goes up, correct.
But that's why what I'm thinking here, maybe I'm missing this, but if I, if I was good with the $300,000 house on worksheet one, right?
Yes.
In order for worksheet two to happen...
Yes.
At least on average, my, the $300,000 house has to be worth more than $300,000.
Correct.
Okay?
Yes.
So let's assume it's up whatever the change in EAV is.
$315,000.
5%, $315,000, right? But if that's 315, the taxes that I will see will go up more than 5.36%.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. That, so in a way, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
It is not, but it was putting too many variables into discussion.
Yeah, I get that. No, I understand that.
You're having trouble dealing with what's in play and what's not, right?
And changes that it becomes...
But we certainly should not conclude that worksheet two appears to be a lower increase to taxpayers than worksheet one because in the end, that may not be the case, right?
That is correct, yes, because a $300,000 house may be valued at 290 or it could be 300.
Yeah, it could be either way, but if we just take the average, for the EAV to go up on average, everything else can go up.
Right.
Right? I don't know what your particular situation is, but on average, you want... Okay, is that clear? Because I was, I mean, when I read the sheets, it looks like A option. Now worksheet two looks like it's a lower increase on average. Okay, makes sense because you've got more EAV, but it doesn't take into account the fact that, well, your property could be going up.
You're getting more EAV from the property going up.
Everybody clear on that?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll have more discussion on that. It, truthfully, the EAV thing doesn't matter for this discussion.
The higher the EAV is, the lower the tax rate, you know? That's what happens if the EAV is higher and your extension remains the same. Obviously, your rate goes down because you have more dollars to spread it over.
Got a broader base.
But I really think if you think about it on average, the only thing that really matters is which option to choose.
Correct, yes.
And, and I think that's the hard decision we need to make.
Pat, our, one other note before, um, we leave, uh, the tax levy. Mr. Collins and I had a, um, a, a really nice back and forth earlier today. To point out for the public again that over the last four years, we have abated or not collected roughly, uh, $12 million in taxes, um, which is, um, you know, great, and it's a large amount of money for a taxing body, um, moving forward. And most of that has come from bond and interest, correct? Yes.
Correct, yes.
Right? Um, so, uh, and this year, we, uh, last year, we also, um, reduced the tax rate, um, as well. So, uh, that had an impact on everyone in the district because the rate went down. So we want the public to know again that the board is looking at all options they have for the last, uh, several years, and will continue, uh, to look at all of those options, and we're certainly, um, all aware and all cognizant of, um, the difficulty that, um, homeowners are facing, uh, with property taxes in the district, right? Across the state.
Just one other question on enrollment, which is related to the comments. Do we know the new, um, subdivision that's going to go in in Cuneo? Have there been any projections on what that's going to do to our enrollment?
One in, um, by the Pine Grove?
No.
No, Cuneo.
It's on the north end of Cuneo.
Yeah, no, not yet.
I don't see any of it itself, and, um, you just have information from the other side.
Because I don't think there's anything we know of that suggests our enrollment's going down, at least not significantly.
No.
I mean, if anything, maybe, maybe between the school, two schools, there could be some differences, but...
For the single-family houses, going up?
Yes, there will be single-family houses, and there's another development, um, yes, which, where's the other development going to be in Libertyville?
That is one Butterfield across from, uh, elementary school by the golf course.
Really?
166 homes are going to go there. Some, um, multi-family homes, attached homes, others are single, and, um...
That's Libertyville?
On the golf course?
That's a Libertyville.
By the golf course. It's actually the, um, Archdiocese.
Yeah, right, they own the golf course. But is that going to take away from the golf course?
No, no.
I don't think so.
The Archdiocese is selling some of its property to the developer.
On the corner.
On the corner that's...
So that's, you know, on, that would be on both sides of the...
On the corner of what?
45 and Butterfield, or 176 and Butterfield.
176 and Butterfield.
There are posters, Butterfield and 176.
Right on that corner.
Is it a gas station?
No, on the opposite corner.
Is it on the north end?
It's on the northwest side, northwest corner.
Across from Lake and Butterfield, pretty much.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. From across from 176 and Butterfield, there are already houses there.
Yeah.
That's by area.
We're talking Winchester.
It's by the golf course there. Yeah.
So that's Pine Meadow?
Yes, right next to it is, there's some property that belongs to the Archdiocese.
So it has to be in the, so it has to be, it has to be south of Pine Meadow.
It has to be south.
Yes, it's south, it's south of the golf course.
Across from the Longwood, I think where Carol lives.
Yeah, right. Yes, exactly.
Kind of north of the Jehovah's Witness building.
So the point, the, the point on enrollment, just to bring it back, I think the point, the point on, the, no, that's okay. no, that's okay. The point on enrollment is, we have been relatively flat for 12, 13, 14 years. And we do have a little up at Libertyville. One year, we just graduated, not too long ago, a small senior class at Vernon Hills High School. But District 73 had 170-some students show up after school or at the beginning of school this year that are brand-new to their district. Those students will eventually come to us. Our projections going out that we update every couple of years is, we're still going to be flat. So we're actually in a good place for the two facilities that we have at this point. We don't have a lot of, you know, unused space at either building, as you know. We're always looking for additional space at both buildings. So that makes it easy for us to look forward and kind of predict out that we're going to be somewhat stable with our enrollment. Once we get some more information from these two subdivisions, there will be impact fees that both of these builders will have to pay to all of the taxing bodies, the school districts, and we'll get more information on that and the range of prices for the houses. And then we'll get some prediction, you know, we'll get some analysis on what that looks like in enrollment. But where they're positioned right now, and they both appear to be relatively close in size, where they're positioned right now is the Cuneo property would be around the Choice Zone, so they would go to Vernon Hills. Obviously, the homes that we're talking about, by the golf cars, would go to Libertyville. So it's, we couldn't ask for a better split, actually, you know, with enrollment. So we'll have more information and be reporting out. Yasmin is meeting with a group from the village and the builder on the Libertyville project, and I've been involved somewhat in the Cuneo project. So we'll see how that moves forward. But that will also add tax base to the district as well, obviously.